And recording of members' presence.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are we ready?
Yes.
Mine looks different than yours, but we're okay. We're sorry.
Hanson.
Here.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Pingleton.
Yes.
Barton.
Here.
Open meeting compliance statements, Brad.
Hi, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alva Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the office of the superintendent.
Thank you, Jerry. Number three, consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature, normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. Consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. 3.1, addition of items of new business to the agenda.
There are none.
3.2, minutes of the December 4, 23 special meeting and the December 4, 23 regular meeting. Approval of financial report, approval of the extra duty assignment schedule, approval of the activity fund report, approval of the activity fund fundraisers, approval of the activity fund inter-account transfers, approval of the child nutrition report, and to declare any following items as surplus.
Okay, we'll go back up to agenda item 3.2, our 2023 special meeting and the regular meeting minutes. Did not see any errors on those. Agenda item 3.3, you'll see our top attachment are the December investments. And I'll thank Ms. Hughes for her work on that as our county treasurer. She makes all those investments for us. On the bottom attachment is our monthly comparison. So I'll walk you through that comparison and see this is year-to-date. And so we have comparatively, last year, December to December, we're down 495,654 in our gross production. Our motor vehicle tax, we're down 8,761. Our REA tax, we're down 32,191. And then we are actually up in our school land earnings and county four-wheel tax. When you look at those comparisons by chart, you can see that I have the income and expenses for the last three years. And then we also have those comparisons by month. So to date, we have a revenue decrease of 7,967. And we've got an expense increase year-to-date, 682,299.64. You'll scroll on down to the fourth, or actually fifth page. We just received our adjusted allocation. And you can see we've received a 2,000 reduction in our state aid. And so state aid is based off of student counts and student days attended. It's off weights. I remember some of those weights in the budget book. And so that's what that's based off of. So we've seen a reduction in some of those student weights. And then finally, I kind of added this, just to give you some context on collections. This tells you our percentage of collections to date. So you look at the FY '24 column, and you can see current year add-on, we collected 52% of what our estimate of needs is. So if you look at these other columns, the first number, the number not in parentheses, is going to be a comparison to December also. Okay? So that's giving you your apples-to-apples comparison. What you see in parentheses is what we collected at the end of the year. Okay? So that kind of gives you some context where we're at. And so you can see, we've got some pretty similar collections, but we are down pretty significantly in areas. Okay? And so what you'll see when we begin to look at, and this may be kind of difficult to see, but so each month, when I track this financial part of it, you can see this column over here on the far right, column I, that is your percentage, okay, of our estimate of needs. So if you scroll down and you look at this, we're going to collect a total at this point, 66%. So how do you do that when we're down on those other areas? Because when we get our estimate of needs, not every revenue collected area is accounted for our estimate of needs. So there are certain areas, such as, for an example, we don't get a estimate of needs for prior year add-on, and we collected 110,000. And they collect more. We don't get back years tax. They don't put that in our estimate of needs because they don't know. And so that will always, so you have areas like that. And then you also have state and federal funding that's also going to boost that estimate of needs or that collection. Okay? So before I move on to the next agenda item, any questions? Okay, we do not have any extra duty assignment schedule changes, agenda item 3.4. Agenda item 3.5, you can see two attachments there. Summary for December, activity account, revenue expenditures, and then you have the summary for the year. Since we last met in December, there have been very little change to those activity accounts because of lack of events in between those board dates. Agenda item 3.6, we don't have any fundraisers bring to the board this month. Agenda item 3.7, no inter-account transfers. Agenda item 3.8, open that attachment up and show you our child nutrition numbers. You can see that from previous month, November, down significantly. Didn't have as many school days. Okay? So when you look at it as a comparison from last December and previous December's, very similar numbers. Okay? That just has to do with the number of school days that we have. And then agenda item 3.9, we don't have any items in surplus. If there are no questions, I would recommend approval of the consent agenda.
Contain motion? Make motion 3.1 to 3.9 being accepted as presented.
Second.
Barton.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Pingleton.
Yes.
And number four, vote to approve purchase order in campuses and the following funds for physically year '24. 4.1, general fund as referenced, and 4.2, building fund as referenced.
Okay, so we'll start with agenda item 4.1, our general fund. If you'll open the top attachment, I'll go through some purchase orders that you'll see there. Purchase order number 386, which is with R&amp;T Diesel for 5,571. That was multiple repairs on, from a skid steer to AC to exhaust pressure switch on different buses. Purchase order number 389, Junior Library Guild. You will see later on in other board meetings that from each site, we'll be spending money through Junior Library Guild or other book companies. That's a state requirement. We spend $9 per student on books. Purchase order number 390, 391, those are going to be replacement and reconditioning of helmets, which are required. And then 391 is your new helmets and shoulder pads for high school. And that's replacement of ones that can't be reconditioned and certified. On 390, on those reconditioning, I believe that's about 18 middle school helmets and 41 high school helmets. So that takes care of the reconditioning for both of those. That's on a rotational basis. So we make sure and have all of our equipment repaired and ready. Purchase order number 392 is Compass Athletics. Those are track uniforms, replacements, and also practice jerseys for football that are replacements. We ordered an additional 10 women and 10 track uniforms because in the past, we have not had enough uniforms for all of our track kids. And so that's going to ensure that we've got enough uniforms, hopefully. I mean, obviously, we might need to move it with our kids. And then finally, purchase order number 394, Matthew Flinton. We had Dr. Flinton come and present at our professional development on trauma-informed instruction, January the 3rd, I believe it was, 3rd or 4th. And Dr. Flinton came and gave a presentation on trauma-informed instruction with our entire staff, for our entire staff. Any questions about our general fund purchase orders? If you'll open the second attachment, you'll see payroll. Those are all substitutes or a new hire that we will be going to need for custodial position. Okay, agenda item 4.2, our building fund. We have two purchase orders in the month of December out of the building fund. First purchase order number 54, Chapman Bush LLC. We had a drain pipe out here by the indoor that at some point was hit and pulled up from the ground. And so they came and put that back in. And then purchase order number 55, gagged on plumbing. That was to repair our leak at Lincoln Elementary, our gas leak at Lincoln Elementary. Any questions about our purchase orders for the general fund or building fund? If there are none, I would recommend approval of agenda item 4.1 and 4.2.
Move to approval of 4.1 and 4.2.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Pingleton.
Yes.
I have member five's, simple things reported.
We have one resignation to present to the board tonight from Christina Roach, our high school custodian. She is no longer with us and submitted her resignation. Agenda item 5.2, communication. This month is board appreciation month. And just want to thank you all for your service, not only to our students and staff, but this community. We all know that service is not always easy, and especially leadership. And so really appreciate this board's leadership through our strategic plan, through our hiring process, and each day supporting our students and our staff and everything we do about public schools. So as a small token of thank you, the State School Board Association has presented certificates for each one of you to say thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Smile, Paul.
Okay. Okay, agenda item 5.3, strategic plan. And we'll see, you have attached there the presentation for tonight. Mrs. Tucker and I are going to kind of tag to you this presentation. Oops. And so I will put that up here on the screen. So this is kind of an update for our resources. As we know, resources is really more of our capital improvement. And where we're headed with that, you will see various links throughout this presentation that you all will have access to from that, from the assemble meeting system. You'll see them in that color right there. You can click on that, and you can have access to them. So I will turn it over to Mrs. Tucker.
Dr. Argo and I have worked on this a handful of years together. First action step was, and this is just, this is not all a comprehensive list. This is just a list of a few of our action steps, was to establish a committee for facilities, technology, transportation improvement. And that timeline, Dr. Argo said, it has a list of when we've met and the people, and then the presentations that we did. We attached those. And so I will make sure this gets attached after the board meeting. So you'll have access to the slide show also. And in that way, if you have any questions when you look at any of those things, I'd be happy to answer the questions. In creating the facilities plan, it was to include an IT ticket system, which is accessible to all of our sites. Some sites use it more than others, as we're trying to make it more used more regularly throughout. And we all have access to it. Not all of our custodians use computers as much as others, but we're working on that to get that improved. And that also goes to our head custodian as well, which we'll talk about here in a few minutes. Our custodians do slightly inspection reports where they go through our buildings, their playgrounds, and they look at what maybe are some safety features that need to be. They check our exit lights and make sure everything's in full function. Also, as you see, we have building the safety and security needs. And that's ongoing. And I'll talk about that a little bit more in depth in the next slide. We also gather enrollment information and census data. We did that at the initial establishment of our committee. We got the census data for our area as far as, my brain is, demographics and whatnot for our area. And then we also assessed whether there was a need for facilities manager. And we did discover there was a need. There was for a period of time, we didn't have a head custodian. Dr. Argo kind of took that on and was ordering supplies and whatnot. And we realized we really had the need to bring back a head custodian, which is currently Patricia Gluth. She orders district supplies. She's kind of the main contact person when we need to coordinate inspections throughout our district.
And we did that. And part of why we did that is I did a fair good job. The other part of it was during COVID, we were trying to just manage and help one another out. And so it was easier for me to be able to make some of those orders and meet trucks and not ask folks to go. And so it kind of took on a life of its own. And now Patricia does a fantastic job and has really, I think, improved our ordering and just helped the whole process out. Because she's a professional, she knows it much better than I do.
And this action step, continue to evaluate all school facilities for safety and security, which include entrance and exits, fire panels, which index comes and does an annual inspection on our final fire panels, surveillance, all our sites. Not all of our sites, but most of our sites are having maybe a few places that need some more cameras. And so we've submitted those needs. Also, safety drills and procedures. Accreditation requires us to implement safety drills, procedures, and policies. And when accreditation comes, we have to show them that we're doing and provide that for them. Also, a couple years ago, we did a risk and vulnerability assessment. And that was a state requirement. And Stephanie Prince from the Oklahoma School Security Institute came and did that for us. And it's good for five years. And so she came and gave us a full assessment. She went through every building, anything from signage to door locks. And she just did a very thorough, took pictures and gave us this packet for each school, which was really great for us to really know what we need to do to have better safety measures in our school. And here, and this is from the scorecard, some of our performance measures and where we're at. The facility work order, which I talked about, that it is, every site does have that system. The BAT, the building assessment tool we did at the very beginning of our strategic plan in this committee. And then the three public venues, you know, just to name a few, the HVAC in the new gym and the old gym, the high school cafeteria, the auditorium with lights, and the ADA accessibility for the lift and to the stage are some of the recent things that we have done to update and meet this requirement. And parking, that's ongoing. We hope soon.
Thank you. So I'm going to kind of pick up, kind of with where we're at right now, some of our current capital improvement projects. We had a third party come and reinfect the roofs to challenge the initial inspection. We are waiting on the final report. In an adjusted paint, spoke with O-CIG a week ago. And we hope, I was told I would get it by the end of last week. So we're going to hope that it's the end of this week. I stay on them about twice a week to keep that moving. We also had the Lincoln Library and patio surveyed with an engineering group. They came up and resurveyed, or were going to come up on the 16th and do another survey of just the patio area. So from that report, it appears that there's been some compromising of pipes and drainage underneath that building, which has caused some of the shifting in the library and also in that patio. So we're going to bring up our construction management team on the 16th to take a look at that patio and library and try to get a practical estimate of what that would be to fix. The other component to that that's been suggested is to do an evaluation and review of the mechanical parts of Lincoln, our HVAC equipment. And as we know with our gas leak recently, what's the lifespan there of that equipment? Is any of the shifting and moving causing some compromising there? And also electrical. And so we will meet with them and have an assessment done also on those components to give the board some additional information. Just to ask a question. Yeah. Is there a plan to do a scope of the pipes? I think that was mentioned in the report. Yes, yes. To really find out what is happening there. They're going to want to do that, put a camera in there and see. And yes. So before I commit to anything, Paul, what I'll do is get a cost estimate about what this will be. And then I'm going to bring that to the board, a contract to approve for you all to review and approve before we do that. It won't be a PO like we, like, you know, we maybe have done a purchase order and we've had work done. When it's a project in that size and magnitude, I'm going to wait and present that to you all. Gotcha. Good question. So you have an attachment on that PowerPoint that has the list. And this was the initial meeting that we had with our architect and construction managers. So you have that through. I also provided this list of capital improvement projects that we've done over the last few years. And it's going to be, so when you open that, it's going to be an enormous spreadsheet. And you can see all these tabs at the bottom. These tabs at the bottom just provide some context to the district from our foundation information to enrollment, protest of values, valuation over the past, how about 14 years. But then you'll see this capital improvement tab. And this kind of will give you some context or maybe a little bit of an idea of what we've done over the past four, five, six years, capital improvement-wise throughout the district. And so you can see the purchase of a greenhouse in '17, 49,000 for FFA. You can see our art room renovation. You can see our auditorium, our lift in the auditorium to make it ADA accessible. We also added our lighting in there. And so I've broken it down by fine art, sports, our gym, cafeteria renovation, our bathroom remodels. It's a pretty comprehensive list. And so I tell you this to say, you know, this board, I think community's been very fortunate. We've really done some really neat things capital improvement-wise for our students and staff with our money and not putting an additional burden on the taxpayers. And so I think that's something for you all to really be proud of. You can see our indoor facility dressing room that we did. All of these things that you see many schools passing bond issues, we've been able to do that ourselves. And so we're going to be in a position, as we end the school year, projecting out, our carryover in the general fund will be reduced because we've had additional expenses. Our building fund carryover is going to be still pretty healthy. But as you lose your building, your general fund carryover, there will be things that eventually you'll need to move over to your building. And so it'll be important, capital improvement-wise, that you're patient with our expenses and with capital improvements throughout the district. Okay? So that's something that you can look through. And of course, if you have questions, or next month you have questions, be more than happy to answer any of those.
Just for clarification, can you go back to that?
You bet.
You see that the numerical order right next to it is the year in which that took place. Is that correct?
Yes, we have.
I'm sure it said that at the top of the key, but I was looking at yours.
No, that's a great question.
It won't open it. It won't open in mine.
You have to log into your, to the.
Google account.
Which you, which you have with your school. Your school account, your school account. So that's a great question. Ms. Kane, thank you. Left column is your year.
Yes.
The next column over is the site.
Yes.
The description of it.
Right.
If we used, if it was a major project, that we used an architect.
Right.
Who did the work.
Right.
And then this was more of a sorting. And then you look at column G, that's going to be the fund that paid for that.
Gotcha. Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yep. Good question. Any other questions?
I'm just checking time. Sometimes I think that was just last year and it was '17. Oh, gosh. So thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
How far back is that now?
Right, '17 was the year.
2017 was the year that we changed over. Something happened with Mas and our software. I think we changed to Mas when we gave software. And so that's as far back as I can get it.
Oh, yes, okay. Okay, that's as far back as it goes.
Okay. Any questions on resources and our strategic plan? And again, that's a lot of information, and there's a lot of links there. So I encourage you to read through that. And then if you have questions next month that Mrs. Tucker and I can address, be happy to do that.
Item number six, items of current business. 6.1, discussion of possible board action. Vote to approve an offer of employment to applicant number one, non-certified physician for the remainder of the '23, '24 school year.
So in lieu of the resignation from Christina Roach, we're bringing to the board tonight Janelle Carter, high school, for high school custodial position for the '23, '24 school year. Recommend approval of that agenda.
I think it's her name again.
Janelle Carter.
I'd make a motion that we offer a point that Janelle Carter, the name of the '23, '24 school year.
Second.
Barton.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Pingleton.
Yes.
6.2, discussion on possible board action. Vote to approve the Alva School District calendar for the school year '24, '25.
Okay, so if you look at that attachment and open that up, that is the proposed calendar for the next school year. We had five teachers, five parents, our administrative team, all take part in the development of this calendar. You can see that it is 172 instructional days with eight PD, professional development days, for a total of 180, which our teachers are contracted at, 180 days. The first day of school will be August 8th, with the last day of school, May 16th. The development of the calendar, what we've done in the past is, we will have a meeting with those parents, administrators, and teachers to talk about wants, needs, dislikes, things that we can look at differently, discussion of start times and ending times for school. We get together, put together about three options. From those three options, then we send those options out to our staff at each site, and then also our. and then also our transportation. And then everybody votes, and this proposed calendar was the winning, winning calendar of our three options. I will tell you that after voting took place, we came to a, we looked at option three, and option three actually had an additional day. And so I surveyed our committee because we had to find a day to, we were at one eighty-one, and I didn't catch that and no one caught me. So we are going to take that January sixth day will be no school, and then seventh and January would be P D. And that gets us at our one eighty.
Are we doing that early release again?
Yep, so you can see on the, all the yellow quarterly early release, which is going to give then teachers and principals an opportunity to continue to develop professional learning communities and meeting together to look at data and student outcomes.
And it may just be the way this was printed, or maybe it's that, I don't know, need to adjust. Mine starts on Tuesday. It's in January. Look at the calendar.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't see Sunday or Monday. Is all I, all this is mine?
I had to make mine smaller to get it all in.
Does it speak?
Yeah, thank you. Got it. Thank you.
I like to see things written.
Yeah. Well, I do too, and I was cutting off my.
I think I cut off Monday. So I can read it as well. No comment. Well, that's okay.
Any questions about the calendar?
The dates aligned with Career Tech and these versus.
Yes. And thank you for mentioning that. Really appreciate Dr. Bell, Mr. Slater. I also communicate with Mr. Shawn Barker at Cherokee and Mr. Klein in Oakwood. So appreciate, you know, everybody working together to try to make sure we consider all our families when we put this together.
But we do, don't we? Get an extra, like an extra day there at Christmas before the, like Northwestern won't get off the twentieth. I think they get a full week involved. Now that's staff wise. Is this, is there a difference? It's not the same. It's close.
It's not, I don't think it's, I mean.
It's not even close. That's why.
Spring breaks are.
What about our other districts?
Spring breaks are, you know.
They're the same.
Yes.
And are we still a full week at Thanksgiving?
Yes.
And that's not the same in Northwestern.
No, they have class Monday and Tuesday and they're out.
Ours is so much more generous.
It is. It really is, yeah.
Then how does it compare to Tech?
Very close.
Can you get a full week?
Yes, yes, we do. And we didn't use to, but because the other surrounding schools were doing the whole week, it was kind of.
And they probably don't start as quick or they end quicker.
That's right.
But I'm just talking about the holiday times.
Yeah. I think when it comes to that with, with the Career Tech, I think Thanksgiving and the Christmas, they're all very, very similar. Starting maybe off a day or two, but sometimes that's just as well because they kind of get used to something and then they can move over without hitting the wall all at once.
And they get a few more days at Christmas, at the bigger time.
And it always depends upon Christmas falls.
It's still, in fact, it's still nice.
It's very generous.
Things are very generous.
Well, I'm old. I remember getting out the twenty-third of December and I didn't matter when it was. It was going to get over to school.
There's still schools in our area that aren't getting out that quick.
No, I don't think so. It was very nice.
Which I think is nice, absolutely. But I think the knowledge is a great calendar.
But it is. I, as a Career Tech person, I appreciate the communication because that just makes it easier on kids as well. No one's. I miss the boy just for a few more because calendars are a little bit wacky. So thank you for that. I think my board's voting on our calendar tonight as well, so, you know. There's a lot of work that goes into it, and I appreciate that because I remember we've always had that much.
And now with graduation.
Parents and everybody's kind of, yeah, everybody's kind of information up, yeah, graduations. Thank you, Dr. Argo.
So we made a motion to approve.
I move we approve the calendar as presented.
I'll second.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yep.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Six point three, discussion with possible board action, vote to accept a fifty thousand dollar donation from Alba State Bank.
So this is the second year that Alba State has generously provided this donation to our fine arts programs. And, you know, another example, we talked about capital improvement. Oh, we've been able to do, another example why this is a really great community. Our art, band, and vocal programs were able to use this money last year and distributed it out between those three organizations. And we're really able to provide things for their students. And so really want to thank Alba State Bank again for this donation. This really does, it really does change lives for our kids. Kind of appreciate to say that when you're able to purchase things that are, that can put technology or art equipment in kids' hands, you're making a difference. And so we really are thankful for Alba State Bank, and I would recommend approval of this donation.
Make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the fifty thousand dollar donation from Alba State Bank.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Six point four, discussion of possible board action, vote to approve out of state travel for the Alba F F A to attend a tractor tech contest on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-four in Plainview, Texas, and a livestock judging contest on April eighth, twenty twenty-four in Paterson, Kansas.
Really thankful for Mr. Blocker and Mr. Lloyd. They're doing a great job with their kids. Our kids are going to contests, competing, being involved, you know, just this tractor tech. What a great opportunity for kids. And so we'd recommend approval of this agenda item for out-of-state travel for our students.
I move we approve the travel, out-of-state travel for the M N H students.
Second.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Item number big business? Finding documents approved by earlier action. Motion to adjourn?
Second. Second. Yeah, there's a lot of, yeah, you can make that.
We will, we'll come back.
They're going to, they're going to get their money.